To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our head, please. Chairman, my father, we come before you this evening and we give you thanks for all the things that you've given us. We live in a great country where we have all types of freedoms. We ask your guidance to each of us individually on this commission. As citizens of this community, guide us in our ways and our decisions so they may be good and pleasing in order to your perfect will. In your son's name I pray. And, uh...
Very good. I'd like to ask our secretary to call the role of the Plan Commission members.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, by my count, we have six of the nine members. Absent are Lane Freiberger, Adam Dufour, and Urban Day. Um, I received a, I was in communication with Urban Day last night and he asked that I please pass along that he had an out-of-town, out-of-county appointment at 6:00 tonight and would not be able to make it. Um, and then I think Lane Freiberger emailed today that he was going to have a conflict getting here on time. So, with six of the nine, we do have one.
All right, thank you very much. Minutes that have been sent out, we've had a, um, last meeting, there wasn't a forum, had a short, brief minutes on that, so they probably didn't ratify or did they get the minutes for the previous month? Would that be true, Tom?
Yes, I, you know, we would need to. And I failed to remember what it was.
All right.
What else?
I had emailed those previous minutes and everyone.
I read mine. Yes, Daniel's got a version if we could go ahead and...
Yeah, the email minutes, were there any additions or corrections to those?
No.
Uh, look, we moved to pass both of these at the same time then.
I'll make one back.
So, today is the seventh, made a motion, Dr. Mahlin has made a second.
Second.
And second, it's open for discussion. Seeing that, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor of the ratifying him, signify the same line.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, motion carried. Thank you on that. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone to the July 1st meeting of Washington County Plan Commission. Everyone who appears before the Plan Commission is entitled to legal right of due process. Therefore, everyone, resident who wants to be will given a chance to speak. We will ask that when you are called upon to speak that you will state your name and address for the record. Excuse me. Um, first order of business is that we sent this ordinance to be reviewed by the commissioners. And, uh, we have a response from, uh, Tom Cypress' attorney and then also that Phil Marshall has some side notes over here, too. So, I will read this, you know, as for public, um, record. Board of Commissioners, Board of Commissioners of Washington County, Indiana, rejection of zoning ordinance and request for amendments pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7-4-606-G to Washington County, Indiana Plan Commission. Please be advised that the Washington County Commissioner, as the legislating body of Washington County, considered the certification of proposed Washington County zoning ordinance at its regularly scheduled meeting on June 4th, 2013, and June 18th, 2014, as well as a special meeting, public hearing, conducted by Washington County Commissioner on June 11th, 2014. At the public hearing, comments were heard from members of the public and Washington County Plan Commission Chairman David Orr volunteer information and answer questions. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the commissioners voted unanimously to reject the proposed zoning ordinance as written and to request amendments pursuant to the request of David Orr and according to Indiana Code 36-7-4-606-G, the commissioners hereby submit the following statement to provide guidance and reasons for rejection and a request for amendment as follows. The Washington County Commissioner desired to adopt a zone, uh, aid zoning ordinance for Washington County in accordance with the comprehensive plan. It is acceptable that the current ordinance presented be, uh, being limited scope so to address the issues raised by increase in development of confined feeding operations. No commentary was offered for additional areas of regulation at this time. The commissioners desire the point system concept which results in varying setback distance over the static setback regulation contained in the proposed ordinance that does not take into account mitigating factors. Number four, the commissioners do not offer comprehensive, a comprehensive list of required point system categories, but do... Number five, it is acceptable to include in the point system provisions that are not yet in place on the proposed operation and would, would require follow-up compliance action. One such example would be proposal of, uh, operator to plant or install a biofilter which does not exist at the proposed operation. Number five, reciprocal setbacks governing replacement of private residences are not required, not required at this time. From Phil Marshall.
Does anyone, first of all, need a copy of that because I've printed that out?
You've got copies, it's probably best.
You guys, I'll have a copy.
The other sheet that you have in front of you, it says, Washington County Commissioners, Set of 113. This is from Phil Marshall. Washington County Commissioners would like to ask the Plan Commission to review the setback law and be considering, they consider the acreage issue. Uh, commissioners would like the water issue to be defined, do be defined, wells, ponds, and city water. Uh, CFO operations regulated by state, but national, but not, uh, national regulation. The CAFO animal operations regulated by state and national regulation and cosmetic and filtering barriers may be hard to enforce, but are up in there. So, there's a lot of commonalities in here. I think when we get up with Phil, uh, he has probably a more concise definition of the animal operations.
Uh, one thing that did come up that I had, uh, that I omitted from this was the water, references to water. Commissioner Brown may have expressed a concern about water regulation control and because of the limited scope of this Plan Commission's, uh, jurisdiction, I omitted that as a reference in here. Perhaps Commissioner Brown needs to...
Well, probably my concern is, as an individual, what I find most of the operators have two sources, some three. But I, well, I had a fear of, we had talked about, it was magic operations that wouldn't have, that fear that they'd go ahead and apply whatever. I don't think sometimes, you know, I'll say this, I guess, matter of few years, some people not being responsible to their neighborhood. And a drought situation, or water shortage, there's a situation where you did, uh, out here in a rural area, you get water supply problems. And that was kind of my part of concern, was water. By no means did we take anything away from the justice. We just wanted to right the water.
Well, underneath the desk there are the speaker systems. Uh, we got ventilation and stuff. I mean, we don't have a big office.
They're on. Uh, maybe not, yours is.
I think Davidowers wrote this one.
Could you hit yours?
That way, can you hear us out there a little bit better? All right. Um, you know, the, in, in discussion with them, you know, in their, I know we've talked about some things that are hard to, hard to implement because they're not there. You know, when you give a command, and biofilters, you know, and that cosmetic type of book on some operation, you go a long way with, uh, public as far as acceptance of, you know, term of operation, also maybe as, uh, you know, a kind of a odor type of filter, a dust type of filter for residents. And so, you know, that discussion in subcommittees has been vague, you know, but it was taken out because it was an awful hard thing to regulate as far as submitting a permit. Now, the trouble is, how you regulate it after a building goes down, how much of timeline for them to put those type of systems in, in there. So, that's, that's a hurdle that we probably need to look at. I came to you in here, I went back in the files, you know, previous files, and I went back to August, about last year, and August of last year was the last time that the point system was brought up. And there, in the sheet that you've got in front of you right now has the different things that was encompassed in that point system. And with that, there is a percentage of points for each one of those categories, of how to weight it down there, up to 100% of the total amount of points, which is 595. And I think if you look at the arguments that was brought up, we have, we have water issue that's in the point system. We have population density that's in there. Uh, we also have range use, current range use that's in there. We have setbacks, additional setbacks as far as the game point. And we also had in there a deduction for any idea of violation in there. We gave a homestead award for having their, uh, home on that being the immediate, uh, house closest to that. And then we have the emergency manual thing. And this is, this is kind of I D M language, you know, as far as having a plan if there's a, a manure issue as far as, uh, this, well, if, whether it's dry or not, an emergency plan for escape of manure or making a homestead. And that's in there. And then it's got the verification of water, which is 13.4% of the weight in there. And then it also has 8.4% of the unbacked water source. And, uh, the one that was controversial to a certain degree was neighbor notification. And it has a, if they were due to neighbor notification, and there was discussion of those people that had joint warning, you know, where you notified them, he gave you , uh, points of 100, uh, if he did that, which is 16.8%. So, I gave that to you as reference, you know, of some of the previous draft material. And correct me if I'm wrong, but Max, at that, at one of those meetings, we had thought that one, either the top or the bottom had more weight, we thought needed more weight into the scoring, didn't we?
Uh, yeah, it was, uh, the meeting where I was concerned with, uh, more weight at the bottom where you, you didn't really even have, address the, uh, the neighbor situation. And, you know, and, and that's where we come to a stop. We hadn't really proceeded from that point. That, that's where we come to, pretty much a dead standstill on it.
Yeah.
But, but that's from my perspective. Well, the last question we really brought up is, you know, can you do other things and not even have to consider the, the neighbors? So, that's pretty well where I had it left for you to go ahead and consider from there.
Yeah. You know, the, the whole objective is, is that you could get a permit, be permitted if you scored enough points, you know, in the system. Not necessarily, you wouldn't have to necessarily get all the points, but you need to get a combination to add up to get this, you know, to get the score. Now, if you had an I D M violation, you take 595 points and you subtract 150 off of it, it's going to make it pretty hard, you know, to, uh, get all the points that you need. So, it kind of, it kind of cleans itself in that respect. So, you know, I think, I think that probably this scoring system, you know, some type of mechanism tweaking this out is probably what the commissioners are kind of looking at.
Right. I'm in the heart of what you might be just saying there. When you got to that part, you dropped that.
Well, that was one, it was at the last, one of the last 10 minutes.
That's pretty where, where the, where the, uh, point system died. Uh, the next meeting when we talked to Gary and, and when we sat down and figured out how many acres is affected by how much distance, and, and we pretty well decided it might be better to go with just a straight, uh, setback distance, be easier to deal with than, than to go forward with what we had. But that was kind of where you're, where you run to now, what you brought up to date to, to that point there, we didn't proceed past that. And that's where you do start from now is to, uh, re, re-shift your weights, weighting of your points, I think is where David was at, uh, to get what the commissioners would be satisfied with.
See, that's the reason, one of the documents that we put together, she actually put the, the percentage of weight that was in there in each one of those categories. So, I think if, when we look at this, I think we need to think about what, what are some of the more important issues.
Well, we start cutting a lot of these issues out, which I think are key and important issues. I think that, what I seen in short time I was on, is where we started drifting away, getting confused, losing the whole thing. If we go back to this as a basic and then tweak it from there, I think we'd be better off. And this is something that I think the commissioners can live with, but I think that was our state the other day. The CFOs, the CAFOs, uh, who already got, this is the first time I've seen this one. But I think that's what we're headed for, is the point system. I think it's a better protection for everybody.
Lane, do you have any comment to your own subcommittee on that? Looking at this point system, and, uh, that, the latter of the commissioners are looking back at it.
No, other than you probably should make sure that the, since it's a public concern, you should make sure the availability of water is a, is a fairly significant part of that point system.
Okay. I think if you look at water on there, you know, on this scoring system, it makes up right about 22%, almost 22%. If you look at setback and population and homestead, 36, 36, almost 44% deals with population density, setback, and homestead.
I think too, firstly, the, the 150 for the I D M, the UPA violation. I remember I go to this committee, Sean, I had some examples of different producers of account. One of them personally knew that they had a particular violation. And if I remember right, it was a minor, I mean, it was not a contamination issue of that kind. Uh, I think they failed to fire a permit on time or something. I'm not sure that they need to lose because I know where this facility was located and I don't know where they replaced Washington County to build, and they didn't have enough points due to that 150 loss in that violation. Now, I'm not saying, you know, if somebody's been down here contaminates Blue River or something like that, but maybe, maybe we need to separate that out, uh, for different forms of violations. I don't know.
Well, at that point, can they not go to the commissioners' self or say Travis, or something like that? Can they not in turn follow up with the commission for review?
Um, yes, they should do that.
Okay, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be a logical solution to that? I mean, if something's done, it's all the...
See, I, I, I think if it's not in writing, if we don't...
It's more serious that you leave it open to interpretation and depending on who's sitting on the Plan Commission. Ten years from now...
Well, maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying. Are you saying it's already built?
No, they, they were talking about they want to expand.
Oh, okay.
If it went to this point system, if they had gotten a violation, and that, and it's been so long, my selection has been beyond, is, if I remember right, it was not a, they didn't contaminate a river or stream or, it wasn't a manure violation, it was a finer violation.
Like, say there were five days laid out following that.
Yeah, I can't remember what it was, but it didn't cause any problem to the neighbors and the environment.
Just by way of saying it.
But it wasn't a violation by I D M standards, the way I understood it.
And that's the worst thing about how, uh, I D M takes violations, they'll take clerical violations, they'll just say it's a violation, uh, and that's the way they'll reference it. They won't reference it as a workable violation for the clerical.
Oh, yeah, I think it'd be possible to, for us to do that, to be...
I, I, you know, if we could in some way take it back to a water quality violation than being a clerical violation, I think that's more of that's what we would like to see. But being able to get that information, you know, from I D M in that direction so that we can make that determination, I don't know if we could. You know, we'd be to the obligation of the person that's putting, uh, that's a point for a permit to come up with that, uh, particular scenario, because most of the time, if they didn't put the, a violation, it will be in the field notes. It won't be anyplace else but the field notes. Mr. Legal, how do you handle that?
I think what I'd like to do is see what kind of I D M violations there are, because without having that, it might be as simple as, if we can see what types of things they get violations for, come up with a list, it might be easier to say, okay, these are the ones, these are the specific types of violations. I think that would, that would probably answer our question.
What if we were to say the range between, uh, say 75 and 150 points, led to the applicant to prove the violation that they had received?
I think we still need to give some guidance, uh, as to what is given more weight or less weight.
Sure, I, I understand that, but that would take some of the work away from the Plan Commission if you make the applicant provide proof for what their violation was.
A lot of times in our rules or procedures, it's on to the, it's on to the petitioner, the responsibility to give us the information.
Can I just leave that off where it's not even worth, uh, if there's a violation, they can't get the automatic run-by with Travis, they have to come in front of you to explain it wasn't clear, like you're talking about, you know, something that's not, has nothing to do with the, but it, the only thing it would do, if you had a violation, you have to actually come in front of the board and show I got enough other points and this was a clerical violation rather than...
You could take it out of there.
But, but I mean, you could make a trigger where they wouldn't be entitled to a 350 minimum pre-pass without coming in front of the board to explain, like you said, there...
I'm not sure we want to take it out of there because it takes some of the history of violations.
Well, I'd say they, they'd have to come in front of the board, they, they couldn't get an automatic pass for their next operation without coming in front of the board first and then you could, uh, have the opportunity to find out why or what plans they had to direct their action in future planning.
You know, if they had enough points to pass, you know, if they had the 325 points, the way I understand it, it'd be hard for us to say no, you know, and prove it.
Well, yeah, I see what you're, you have to make that a trigger.
Yeah, they'd never come before us, you know. Well, even if they did come before us, as Max is saying, if they had a kind of violation, they all make, they have to come before the commission. But if they still had 325 points, you know, they still, they're still...
Okay, I'll, I'll see where you're going.
They could, you know, I guess, claim discrimination.
Well, I think we ought to check here with, with I D M, they might have changed their procedure as far as categorizing, you know, a violation, but as of 10 years ago, you know, dealing with, with this type of language, you know, they were just throwing it all more often.
Is it, is it not getting lost in the ground now?
Yes. You have to, you will have to get specific with a confined feeding, uh, and expect to, not just I D M, because if they work with solid waste, they won't know anything about confined feeding operation, and, or if they deal with industry, they won't have it. It is, it's unfortunate, but there is not much cross communication. We'll have to go directly to that available feeding, uh, operation. But that, I think that information is available to us and like that, so I think that's probably a good point that we need to look at with this violation.
Is it discriminatory on the next to the last line to just insert the words, "To receive a permit without a special exemption, 325 points without an I D M violation out of 595 points is required"?
I don't know if that would be an issue. That might be a way to get around, but I'd still like the idea of, let's figure out what those violations are first, because it may, the problem may resolve itself. And it may be that there is no comprehensive list of violations, but something tells me there might be, of the types of things.
There'd have to be a better option is to put it into the language here.
Put it into the language down, the, at that bottom.
Yeah.
You know, I, I have several questions I want to...
All right.
Starting with the very first one, what's, what's the clean record for 10 points?
Yes, if you don't have a violation.
Well, that seems to be... What is, if that, with a separate category for I D M V A violation, 150 points, clean record award, 10 points, that seems to be down to me.
Okay.
So, I don't know what that 10 points is for. Anybody, I know it's been a year. Does anybody remember what that was for?
Well, I think that was initially, I think, so if you didn't have any sort of violation, then issues about that.
So, if you do, I mean, it's, it, those are mutually exclusive. Either you're going to not have violations or you are. So, instead of taking away 150, if you take away 160, as opposed to giving 10 points for an I D M violation?
Unless somebody is saying there's a difference between an existing producer and a brand-new producer. A brand-new producer would not have the clean record award, or, or you can, or you can't claim that, but the existing producer could claim the, uh, clean record award.
Okay. All right, I, I do... All right, I do see what you're saying.
Maybe, maybe another way, and it's been a while, it's been almost a year, is that if they're wanting to expand, you know, on an operation and part of their process was to put this biofilter fence, you know, and some of these things in, and they weren't, they didn't do it, they wouldn't get that because they didn't, they didn't fill the obligation. Ten points is almost a total.
Well, I, I would assume we'd be adding new categories. Keep in mind, biofilter's not the only category that might be added to this because we made a decision early on when we first started talking about the point system, we said, "Are we or are we not going to allow categories of things that are not in existence at the time the application's made?" Because enforcement seemed to be an issue with plan commission, it was a consensus, I think, that let's just go, let's just go forward with only those things that are present on the property at the time. That wiped out a whole set of potential useful point system things that may be narrowly tailored to render the results of protecting the community, neighborly relations, things like that, such as development of some kind of hills and planting of trees and, you know, things like that. And I think there were other types of things that that biofilter concept, I think, maybe was only one such issue, but there were other things that could be implemented post-construction that would mitigate the harm caused by the things we're trying to control to the neighbors. But because those aren't, you can't tell that those are going to be implemented at first, we decided we're not going to give anybody any points for those things. And I was very specific, that's why I was, I was so caught up in trying to get to the bottom of that, it was hard for me to follow all the ideas that were being discussed at the commissioners. The one thing I, I did walk away with was it was clear that we're not going to limit it to, and if you, if you review the tape, I mean, it was, are we, are we or are we not going to limit it to the things in existence at the time or can we consider things that may require later enforcement that aren't present at the time of the application, such as biofilters? And that's what that reference in number four is. While the commissioners don't offer a comprehensive list of required point system categories, they did confirm that it doesn't have to be limited to the things in place at the time. And that's a completely different approach we overtook, and it seems to me like there may have been a whole bunch of items that got excluded right off the bat and in my conversations with Kerry, color steel, I was, I guess.
Was there one, was there the one, somebody talking about manure storage?
Manure storage facility?
Was that... I don't know what point that was brought up, if, if provision was made, but I think at that point, the point system was going away. But it's one, it was something about manure storage.
Are you talking about in the commissioners meeting?
No.
Okay, you're talking about here.
Yeah. I'm thinking she was here.
And I don't mean to, I don't mean to distract from that comment, I don't want to walk away from what I was just talking about, though. Does anybody recall? It seems to me that there were several other categories that because we drew that line in the sand, two-thirds of the potential point system topics were eliminated because they weren't indigenous to the land as it's set, they, they would require later implementation and enforcement.
Right, and the...
Back in April, they had a concern that we had, well, what are you going to do about it? You know, they get, they get, you know, have the points... Well, I think, one of the issues is that, yeah, I understand why, and I, and what I'm saying is, I think there are methods to do that, you take them, I mean, we do, Travis, with the, as building commissioner, people are required to do things, you know, as a follow-up on inspections, say, and if they don't do them, or they're required to get inspections after they pull a building permit, if they don't, then there's follow-up recourse and things that you can do. And one of the things you can do is write that into ordinance, it says, you know, you're going to do this, or people develop subdivisions, they lay out plans, they're going to do this, that, and the other. I kind of remember when CBS was going in and they presented plans to the city plan commission, remember? City bought some residences and things and it was a, kind of a big to-do at the time, I don't know if anyone remembers this, and the plans were rejected at first, but they wanted them to implement other things, like the landscaping and the greenery around the edges, I think it was, that was one of those things that was an added that wasn't in the original plans. There are certain things that they wanted to, wanted them to implement before they proceeded. And that's one of those things, well, okay, so then it's approved based on their plan, and what if they don't do it? Well, there's, if later, subsequent enforcement, you pursue them for that and, you know, that's what the third branch, I guess, the government's for is, is to do that. But I mean, I think that if we eliminate things that, there, there are a lot of helpful things that I think other jurisdictions have done in a point system, that if you eliminate those solely based on the idea that, well, it's not already existing at the time as the land sits, the point system becomes less meaningful because there's, you end up giving points for things that aren't narrowly tailored to reach the desired results of protecting the neighbors. You know, they're all of a good character, let's give them ten points because they've had a good record and take away one hundred and fifty points if they've had a violation or something. That may or may, that's not narrowly tailored to limit the migration of odors and dust to the neighbors, where it's based on who they are, what they've been in the past. You see what I'm saying? So, when I say narrowly tailored, what I'm talking about is specific implementations calculated to achieve the goal, which is protection of neighbors.
So, you're saying you think we need a category on there for filter strips and things of that nature with that amount of points we're going?
I would, yeah, I'm not saying that, but yeah, but what I'm saying is that and whatever, I've never sat in on the committee, I've never seen the list, I just remember Kerry making the comment that an entire list of potential point system topics was eliminated the day that we said, "We're not going to give anybody any points for anything that isn't already present, present on the land at the time they make the application."
And that decision was debated because we didn't think it would be enforced.
I understand, and he said that, and I've acknowledged, I understand the reason.
The commissioners have clearly indicated that that's not going to be an issue, so I think it should be a line item on here.
And not just that, I'm saying there may be other things, I, what I want to do, I'm not talking about biofilters specifically, I'm talking about the concept, does anyone, I think Max started to interject earlier, do we have a list of the types of things?
Other pavement tier one, five points for those, and tier two, five points for each of those, go maximum forty, and that, the manure application injection and our incorporation within twenty-four hours would give a certain point, but those one things after the house was built, like you said, how do, how do you come back and enforce if that's the case unless they're coming to ask for a second? Sound like a house or something else, that how do you, and how do you come back and say, "Well, you didn't do what you said you were going to do last time"?
Are you in the A P L fifteen?
Super-sized fans, you were getting so many points for super-sized fans to send out water certain places and stuff.
Here's some of the things that was on, you know, I think this is where you got an underrepatement.
Yeah, that's the second time I've ever...
Tier one method, sprinkler of all gravel driveways, bio, biomass filters installed, unappropriate exhaust fans, anaerobic digester, permeable cover on, impermeable cover on manure storage, or do, look at the manure storage is covered, composting, surface of lagoon is aerated, and other industry-approved technology has proved by B C A, that's tier one. Then tier two is method and installation of shelter bill, windbreak walls, diet formulations, manure additives, and solid separation, and then other industrial-approved technology. I think those are some of those examples that she did.
Right, yeah, let me comment on those. Some of those are things that are kind of a one-hit, one-time, you can check to make sure that they, at the time of construction, implemented that.
Yeah.
Whether they, like the sprinkler system, whether they use it or not, and I can talk to you about how that still might be a factor worthy of considering, but whether they use it or not every month or every so often or whatever is one thing, but requiring the installation, why not use it? And certainly it sets their neighbors up for a clear nuisance, so like if someone's complaining, they at least have the option of operating. But if it comes to daily, weekly, operational oversight, those things I think aren't practical.
Yeah.
Like what they do with their manure every week or whatever, I don't think we have the, the resources to go around and monitor and police.
The kind of stories would be...
That building, the structure itself, probably.
Right.
Do you see the difference between those, there are certain categories that sound like they require regular, daily, weekly, whatever, periodic monitoring, that, I agree, I don't think those are feasible.
You know, honestly, in eleven you had this, I'd take this clean record board out there and put that, put a category of those types of things in there, more than I would have a clean record.
I, I agree. And, you know, I mean, maybe you could even, I don't know, just talking, you know, maybe you could even give them extra points for having something in place or in a house or stuff.
All right.
I think we need to think about what, what is the goal?
Well, our goal is, you know, I, I don't want to make it stagnant for...
What are we trying to protect?
Yeah, you know, if, if a producer or an industry comes up with some innovative ideas, you know, to account to the other control and C C S as far as, you know, what it looks like, you know, I, I would like to promote and reward them for looking for this, especially if they're going to be deficient in some other areas of the planet.
And I think we're trying to protect both parts, right? Now, we're trying to protect the producer and also the homeowner.
Now, if, if I'm not mistaken, though, the commissioners did say they weren't concerned about reciprocal setbacks.
No.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think they also did say they would like you to look at structure size, like Ron had suggested, and that, I don't remember how that was...
Well, we did, but we didn't, because what we found out since then, you can take a smaller area and double the size, double the floor, and you end up with the same problem. And I don't know many of those double floors, but I think that size-wise, the kind of basic way to match, I'm part of the thinking of the, the numbers of the, of the livestock itself. We're all shooting for clean air, like you guys all said, and like you, and the builders, and commissioners are not against the producers, I'm not against the homeowner, we have to survive on both, we need taxes from everybody, but at the same time, and we heard one side of the room versus the other side of the room, and we got to look at both sides, to be fair. And I think that's what the producer's for, and that was a fine line, hard to do, and that's what we're going to have to live with. But when you come up and one of the things was a four-hundred-foot rule and a two-hundred-foot rule and the house-to-house, you're getting awful close. Those sites are a lot cooler, I drove a four-thirty-five, you know, smelling nothing the other night, and then I did, and the guy next to me, you've got the problem, you're going to have it once in a while, but we do live in a country that has to be taken into play. But it's thirty-nine-hundred feet from a school, two miles from a city, well, just because you live in a rural area and you've lived there your whole life, you can't stop your neighbors, but at the same time, neighbors have to be conservative of their neighbors. And that's what we're shooting for.
Yeah, and one of the things, you know, what we heard, someone came to every meeting, say something along the lines of twelve-hundred, seven-fifties, that's the minimum, twelve-fifty or it's more like it, we heard that repeatedly at the plan commission commissioners, other people, the industry was saying, "Don't do any more than, well, the four-hundred feet that IDIM's proposing," dating back to prior to that became a coming of all, and we had that residential setback before IDIM did. And so, I guess, one option you could consider, the law is written, there's additional points for setbacks, but what we could do is say, "Your setback from the closest residence will vary depending on the number of points, and if you get so many points, you have to have this setback, so many points, you have to have that setback," and it will result in a series of setbacks ranging from four-hundred feet to whatever you want to make. That's feasible, and then there's a built-in incentive to help with that. I, I'm not, I'm not advocating for that, but I'm just saying that that's an idea if you want to look at, if you want to appease everyone, it seems like that's something that might be doing.
Let's go down to that separation from house and public use facility and church, and let's just use some examples. The one, you know, it's a required by standard, okay? So, first of all, we've got to define, we've got to define the standard, okay? Now, you want to use the four-hundred as a standard?
I don't like it, nothing you're going to find in the law.
No, no, that's not what he's asking, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
Well, you're asking me four-hundred?
No, 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 what he's asking you is, if you go down to that spot, it says, you get certain points if you're at least two-hundred-and-fifty more than the standard, but we don't know what the standard is.
All right, let's just say that four-hundred is the standard.
So, so then, if it was six-fifty, he's not asking you, do you agree or disagree with four-hundred, he's asking, on this tally, are we going to use four-hundred as the standard? So, that first category would be, am I correct?
Yeah.
That first category, you get the standard plus two-fifty, that's the same thing?
Should the word, should the word be minimum rather than standard?
Well, it depends on if you switch to what I just proposed, okay? That's, I don't, I don't know where you're going with this question.
Well, you know, what I'm, I'm thinking then, first of all, we have to define standard or minimum, you know, to utilize that particular problem, you know, the point.
Well, is, is the four, I mean, yeah, define the minimum, what, what we consider to be the minimum acceptable distance. Probably, going back to some of the arguments we did before, probably the safest number to pick is four-hundred feet, because that's what IDIM says, that's what IDIM...
Yeah, that's IDIM. And that, and that particular category is weighted at twenty-point-two percent for the points, of the, of the point.
I can tell you right now, if we, if you work the math out on this, and if you take four-hundred as the minimum or the standard as written here, it seems to me like if someone's twelve-hundred-and-fifty feet beyond the four-hundred, if their setback's one-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty feet, that far exceeds any setback anyone's even proposed ever in a public meeting or a public hearing, and I think they may only get a hundred-and-twenty points for that. I think this, if that's what we're proposing by this, then these need to be weighted much greater.
But that's just from a home or whatever, that's not saying, that doesn't take the water quality into account there, so are we...
Well, I don't think we can take water quality into account.
But that's what we're going to do with, I guess, I thought that's what we were really looking for, the best way to practice that, but anyways. You see what I mean? Like, it could be one-thousand-two-six-hundred-and-fifty feet from another home, but two-hundred feet from a stream or something like that, you see where I...
Yeah, I need to...
I know, I'm saying, I was just using that as an example, but, but, you know, is, is that the only thing we're worried about? That's my question.
I think it's the only thing we can be worried about, and that's why I abandoned that discussion in my written rejection, summarized the commissioners, but other than sort, there was a concern about sources of water, and I, and I, I started this discussion about some questions, and we haven't gotten past it the second... And I started this discussion about some questions, and we haven't gotten past it the second. But one of them was on the sources of water. Keep in mind that if someone says, well, I've got Salem and I've got East Washington. When East Washington buys their water from Salem. So if we're worried about water supply, does that count as a second source of water? If we're worried about something other than water supply, overall, then maybe that's not. I don't want to get on that topic right now. But right now, my understanding, Danielle, is that from a water standpoint, that's all the concern ourselves with.
Okay, I may not need to think about that. Because I don't...
Because we've got that form of regulation of who regulates what, you know? We can regulate site location. And one of the site locations, a proper site location, is distances from residences. But can that site physically handle the needs of that operation plus the needs of the immediate residents? Or is it going to take away from the immediate needs of the residents, such as water source? You know, is there enough pressure there? Is there enough water quantity to take care of that poultry building and plus the existing residents in there? Yeah, that's, we're not into so much, even though it's an important issue, it's out of our regulatory issue of quality of water.
Of quality.
We have to look at quantity of water.
Okay, and that's where, okay, that said.
Right.
I don't think we're prohibited from concerning ourselves with it, to my knowledge. However, it seems to me like, rather than being a point, since that has nothing to do with odor, abatement of odors, dust, nuisance, it seems to me like that is not at all tailored, let alone narrowly tailored, to address these issues. And rather than give someone who happens to have a well or access to two different township water sources, a bunch of points, so that they can build closer to their neighbor, it seems to me like what we should do is maybe make that a requirement, unrelated to the point system, that is going to cause varying setbacks. Because that, again, I don't know if you might follow the logic here, that is something we can concern ourselves with. And it seems to me like that's unrelated to what kind of issues you're causing the neighbor and the neighbors can cause you, which is primarily governed by setback and mitigating things that can be put in place. Number of sources of water, whether there's 10 sources of water or one, will have zero impact on the neighbor. And should we or should we not be considering changing the setback from the neighbor based on the number of sources of water there?
Well, I kind of disagree with you, because some of the public comments out there, people were really concerned about water pressure, you know, water...
And I think we should be, and I think it should be in there. My point is, should it be given, should it be a requirement that they have certain things?
I think it's a key issue, especially in a rural area with the water lines, because some roads only got an inch and a half, some are three inches, some are eight inches. But the distance measurement of the meetings I come to is the biggest objection we heard from everybody, whether it's a factor or not, whether it was 400 foot, or 750, or 1,000. And I think that's the number-one issue we need to settle. And what you're saying is that a standard, a standard of 250? I don't think 250 comes into play. I think you have to start at a minimum of 400. Water is going to be the next issue you have to deal with, especially in the fall of the year when we went through a drought. It's time to be this year with slip.
If I read this right, so you're saying that if we go to 400, then... If I read this right, we're looking at a minimum of 650?
To get that point.
To get that, but again...
So if you go to 400 and get zero points off of this thing?
No.
If you set it 400...
Changing over to Tom's logic of, if you're going to build a greater distance, you should be rewarded for doing that.
So you're wanting to wait, you're wanting to wait for that, so...
The distance versus the points.
See, if you go to the maximum from the X to 250, you go from 250 to, you multiply that basically by I time. But you're not getting, if you were to take the 40 points times five times, that would be too much, correct? Of some type of ratio like that, it'd be more conducive as far as how you wait, you know...
Actually, to comment on Commissioner Marshall's comment, I really think the way it's written is why he said I would suggest. And that is, if there's a greater setback, you give them points. What I was saying is, just because that's what was talked about in the past a year ago, what you could do is say, the number of points you get determines what category of setback. One determines the other, as opposed to vice versa. And in the present system that I see here, the way it's written, which we don't have to stick to, it says you get so many points. The goal is to get a minimum number of points. You get so many points for various setbacks. So if you're, as written, say, if 400 was the standard, then if you were 250 feet more than that, you got 40 points. If you're 500 feet more than that, you get so many points. So your number of points is determined in part by your setback. What I'm saying is, don't feel confined by that previous draft. You could say, instead of the number of points determining your setback, we could consider all these other factors that we previously excluded and come up with a new system that says, well, based on the number of points you get, that determines where your setback is. And setbacks in Washington County are going to range anywhere from 400 feet to whatever. Okay, I hate to throw a number out there, because I don't want to sound like I'm advocating. But you could come up with a system that the setbacks determine by the number of points, as opposed to giving points for greater setbacks. That may be a difference without any meaning.
Well, it is, but you're still working on a point system to try to accomplish that.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what I think we want to go for. There's some that's 1,250 already.
In the real world, the setbacks are not going to be much more than, what, 750 in the county? I mean, realistically, it's not going to be much more than that, is it?
Well, they're going to keep it down because they keep it to the, with the water. With the water not to have to put in.
I really think that, you know, if you take a look at the separation of house and that point system, it's the most heavily weighted category as far as the points. So if you're going to make the biggest impact to each or score, you're going to have to do it there. You're going to have to do it there. That's going to be the first place where you can make the biggest impact for your points.
And if that is the greatest public concern, it makes sense to make the biggest impact there.
And then the next one, then there's two other ones that are big weights in this. And one of them's the homestead award, that being the closest on that property to that. And that's 16.8%.
You know, I'm not so sure about that one. Because I think it's fraught for abuse.
Well, everything can be fraught for abuse. And I'll tell you why, I'll put it this way. If a, if an operator lives at that operation, by law, he's going to have more incentive to manage that operation to its utmost key than somebody that lives 15 miles away from a three-mile system.
Right, I think the abuse is, okay, they've got a house there on the premises, but they don't...
This is, this is their homestead award. The definition, I think you go back, that's their primary residence. That's not an address, that's their primary residence.
Well, that goes back to the daily, you know, if they've got two different residences, are we checking, how many days of the year are they there?
Yeah, but I think a prime example of that would be, like, for example, liking trouble on what he's cooking himself.
Right.
You know, that's an entity that the producer has to pay for. So if he's living 15 miles away, why should he pay for it? There's a neighbor making supper in the condo.
That's right, and that's what...
But if he's living there, he's probably going to be more... So I agree, I think that's a justified one.
I think there've been some objections raised, that's discrimination, that, to reciprocal setbacks. But I still think that makes more, it still makes sense, even though they're not for reciprocal setbacks. But even if we did, it makes sense because it magnifies the incentive that the producer has to exercise best practices because they all want to be subject to, they're the closest, they're the most subject to the foul objectionable issues that would be the next closest neighbor, and therefore, they're more likely, they've got incentive for their own benefit to exercise those best practices, so...
And I'll tell you what, when we clean our buildings out, my first, my wife is my first woman to object. Okay? So it's more convincing for me to hurry up and do it as clean as possible.
That's right.
So, all right.
Next.
I want to pose a question. Is the, is the county, or can the county, because it makes a concern about water and what happens if there's a water shortage, can the county actually say to the producers, as you clean your buildings out, not throw the birds out on their nose, but I mean, as the birds leave, can they actually, could they possibly keep the producers from restocking the houses during a water shortage to help alleviate, or like, a week or so, I mean, up to... If they have a water shortage, it's not like a six-month-old deal. But I mean, whether that would be, or whether the producers would voluntarily say, if we clean these houses out, we won't put them back for, until you're really good set, the water's like, because that would be X many gallons per house.
But would you have to come in on disaster to do that?
That'd be like an emergency order.
If you come in through the massive emergency disaster, and I mean, if you've really got that spirit, your emergency disaster could step in to dominate, I don't know who would call that shot. But if you're in a drought situation, and you've got a life versus a animal, life's going to take down, it's over. If there's danger of a person, I don't know who calls that shock, but I would say disaster would come into play. Now...
They're saying there's water shortage.
I mean, that's what it's going to come to, but it's going to take somebody that's a player, a state of emergency. But at that point, the human body's going to take down, it's over. We haven't seen that.
Well, that's the thing, what I would think, whether you could do anything where you can just keep the new birds from coming in, rather than saying, we're not going to be, you know, water your birds until four days away from going to butcher anyway. I mean, if you've got to shut down something, it'd be less offensive to the producers to let them finish their block and just not work.
I think that's going to be, it seems like that would be up to the producers to decide, or their companies.
Well, that's why, I didn't know, but that's one of the questions, you know, what happens if there's a water shortage you've got? And we keep making poultry operations to make the situation worse? Whether that, where the county could say, we have a backup plan that, you know, if it seems like we're getting to this point, we'll ask them not to refill their houses for seven or 10 days, or if the water shortage alleviates or whatever.
So you're going to go into a corporation business type of aspect of changing their operational procedures. I don't know, it's a good question, you know, as far as with water. Because I mean, I think you're just like an insurance policy. You go in there, can you put, how many scenarios could happen? You know, as far as different things. Can we mitigate all the different aspects that would affect the impact? Like a really severe drought in here. So who's going to make that call? Are we going to wait till the governor makes the call? Are we going to wait till the sheriff makes the call? Are there being an extreme water source shortage? I know that municipalities may call that no water in the farms, and that type of thing. But whenever you go to livestock operations and animals, that's a different story, you know? Because livelihood of those animals, who you may be caring of animals, is just equal, you know, almost as equal as what the human consumption.
Just the livelihood of those creatures?
Yeah, and so you're sitting there jurysticking in that. Now, I can do without my car being washed, or I can empty my yard and burn up. But as far as having water for those animals, that's a big issue.
Well, that's what I'm saying, two or three, but then on the other hand, chance of you or that severe of drought, that pond's going to be dry. And then, in most areas, your wells aren't that good. The supply of that water isn't going to be here. So it's going to fall back to the number one, and the final call is going to be the watering house, city water line. Now, whether it's Salem or East Washington, the one's going to get from the other. And we probably will never see what we're talking about, but it's always a possibility.
And before we get there, I think, well, have we ever seen that? Question number one, have we ever seen that? And number two, have we ever seen a situation where they've said, okay, don't water your lawns, don't do these other things? I think we have seen that, or at least in Indianapolis we saw it. And I think what, I think the water companies...
What's that guy here, David?
So I think the water companies are on top of it enough, and long before we reach the second point, they're going to start rationing water supply to necessary, you know, humans and animals, not to cars and lawns, and things like that. So I think this is something we'll see coming. But it seems to me that rather than us speculating, it's kind of like the IDEM question. I'd like to just go to the water company and say, have you all had discussions about additional usage from CFOs? Is this an issue? Is this something we need to concern ourselves with? Who makes the call? What happens if it does? Is it even possible that we can get to this point? Do you have a backup plan for bringing water in from another source? And I think, I think they do have that ability to purchase water from other sources. And so this might be something, you know, and we've not done the research on it. And maybe that's what we need to do, is figure out, is this something where this could really be an issue?
I'm at least, we're still discussing this, about what a plan, what would happen. Because they said, they told me here about a month ago, that they said they wasn't going to be able to hook on anymore at the present time.
More combined to them.
Not eating, not raising, because of, on their lines, because of the...
So they're already aggressive.
The size of the water lines that go through there, and for the water to...
They're going to have a certain amount of pressure also.
Yeah, most of their concerns are really to lines, not water.
Yes, not, not water, both those lines, not water, right.
But that's one thing that's not being checked, with the electric grid up, to make sure that they do have, and I have heard that with water lines, too.
Well, that gets done at the producer level with their company. I mean, they've got to make sure that they've got the capacity to do it.
But till they get dead, then that, we don't even move on anything else. If they can't get the line on this property, they're going to have to. And southern end of the county, we do have that problem down there on some cattle.
I guess my point is, we've heard it raised a couple of meetings, what's going to happen? Who's going to ration, who's first, who dies first, the people or the animals? We don't even know if this is a viable issue.
Well, they do.
And I hate to see us recommend language in an ordinance we write based on speculation. I'd like to see us start addressing this issue outside the meeting, reporting back to see if this is something we need to intelligently address or not.
But the direction of the commissioners was that we come up with a point system. They didn't say whether we assigned these line items five points, or 50 points, or 195 points.
They were nowhere near that.
They just said point system. So I don't think, you know, it's something for us to start eliminating, eliminating line items from points. It's just a determination of what kind of point value this planning commission assigns.
See, if they can verify in a water, existing water line access capable of providing a facility without, with water, without disruption or degradation of service to other users, that's a maximum point, that's 80 points. a maximum point, that's 80 points, compared to just having a private well which is torn.
I've got a question for you, David, do your clients, do they have any requirements for water sources for your operations?
Oh, private, yeah, yeah, I've got one facility in the Carahut, it's off of Pondwater, there's not enough water, it's in mining country where all the wells are all, there's, there was real water there, close to, our resources is Pondwater, so, you know, we look at the water source, I don't have any specific criteria, during drought, it was a close issue, it got real close, we actually hauled water into it, and that's probably what would happen with these other units, they'll, they'll still haul the water.
Well, and I see what they're doing now, is they're starting to collect water off the roots of their barns, store it underground for.
That's a huge, huge resource, you know, for them to do that. Alright, I, I think we've got the point system, I think we ought to check with the water company and see where we're at, but I think the point system is weighted on water here to what our objective is, and I think we can put every scenario in. I want to go back up to the one separation of the house. I've got some ideas here, okay? I think we've got three tiers of operations. I mean, I, when they're not defined this way, and I'm going to describe, I'm going to describe an AFO, and that's our framers that we went down to start jurisdiction, lower numbers, that's our 18,000 turkeys. I'm identifying them as an AFO.
Maybe I'm a below the threshold.
Yeah, the below state threshold. I classify them as AFO. Combined feeding operations are the tier that is hit by state regulation, that have to have a permit. A CAFO is a large operation that is recognized by the state and also recognized on the national level with an EPPS permit. So that's a fairly large operation. Alright, for reasons of standards, I look at those operations as being different in impacts, you know, on neighbors and the community. An AFO, you can start with the minimum setback, which is your standard for what you start with at 400. But a CFO, which is a larger operation, that is a permitted operation, would have to have a standard or minimum of 600 feet, okay? And then a CAFO, which is a lot larger operation, that you put in with a standard perimeter, or to start on that standard at 750. Then use all these other perimeters as extra points, the standard plus 250. So that you're an AFO, that's a small operation, minimum is 400, if they go to 250, they get extra, they're 40 points on their score, and all down the list. What, I'm, I'm bringing that up as, as discussion.
I, I think that's a great idea, but I'm going to ask Mr. Legal over here, would it fly if we try to regulate a state ID regulated house?
Oh, yeah, I think we, we can implement.
We do those.
I mean.
That's our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
It's your jurisdiction here.
Is that, I mean, other counties, think about that, so only ordinances in other counties may have setbacks that are different, and it, it can apply to anything over, I mean, our, our composed ordinance is not just going to regulate things between 18,000 and 2999. Is that discriminatory?
Well, the reason I'm asking that question has been made very clear, that we cannot regulate certain aspects of CFOs that are mandated by the state and the federal government.
No.
The water, the.
No, no, that's not aspects of CFOs. There are certain things that the state regulates by department, such as manure, or chemist, state chemist office, water, like water pollution. We can regulate things that have to do with health, safety and welfare, which include odor, nuisance, abatement, things like that, and so if that's the thrust of the ordinance, is to protect people from odors, nuisance, abatement, things like that, then it's got nothing to do with those setback requirements.
Well, don't get me wrong, I think it's a fantastic idea, I'm just playing devil's advocate, sure advocate, because are we going to get sued? If, if we put, if, if, if a CFO comes along and we say you have to be 600 feet back, and the state says they have to be 400 feet back, is, is somebody going to get tipped off and sue us?
You can't go, I am right, but you, you can set your problem, God.
Nobody could go under, I don't, they just couldn't build, because I didn't implement it.
Right.
Scott brought up a good point, and it's very, very legitimate. Combined feeding operation, I want to do this to look, and whenever I describe these, these are single side operations. A few years ago, I didn't come back and wanted to put me as a CAFO, combine all of my farms together under one permit. I have got nine permits as a CFO. I opted to stay as a CFO instead of going to, to a CAFO, okay? Which is a larger operation that they were going to combine on my news. I think what we're looking at is a site-specific, you know, entity going in, but so, when I say a CAFO, I'm talking about one of a 10,000 hauled operation going in that is a legitimate one-side CAFO, not combined of all the farms within two or three counties. So I think that needs to be for clarification on that. I opted to stay with CFO and work nine permits, I have to do nine pieces of permit for it, but that's, there's one better system for me than going to a CAFO and going after national CAFO. So, site-specific, you know, site-location specific, you know, if you've got a CAFO permit, but it's got a multitude of different farms all pulled together, I don't think that fits, you know, with that. I think a CAFO or a specific site, that it's big enough to, to trip that being a CAFO, then it needs to be looked at, because I look at it as a point source of odor. Is your point source of odor, odor more in, considering everything that's managed to say, is it more prominent with a higher concentration of animals on site than a lower concentration? Higher concentration, so I'll start with a larger setback on that. That's, that's part of my premise of looking at this tier type of system.
You're saying just keep your, your, your numbers, less your, your.
Well, what I'm saying is.
Your numbers, less your, your CFO.
Right, you just keep your numbers, then each is CFO, you know, for example, just put it at 600. 400 your minimum on your AFO, your smaller operation, 600 on a CFO, the state regulate a large operation, or your 750, and then still have, that's your standard for them to start working on score system.
I think it's a great idea.
Because it directly addresses the issue, and that's better out there.
Right.
The more you got, the more you want, because it does create a, maybe there's a problem with it that we're going to run into.
Well, I don't know what there is. I think we ought to throw that against the wall with somebody and see if they see any problems with it, you know?
I, I, I'll see what it'd be.
Well, I don't know either, but you've got to find a wall, throw it in some light light.
Yeah.
Well, I can assure you the producers aren't going to like it.
Well.
I, I don't know, I think that's fair. I think that's fair to the producers, and I think it's, it's fair for the homeowners as well. And then, you know, if they, if they go under 250 feet and they get 40 points, you know?
Right, and the, the reason I say that back, because we go back to the commissioners, they don't, they don't feel like 400 is enough, because, you know, for one, you put in a huge unit right beside it at 400 feet, you know, six buildings or eight buildings, you know, in there, and they go 400 feet, I mean, it's a lot more intimidating to have six buildings 400 feet away from you than it is two buildings 400 feet away from you, just because of the size of the operation.
I mean, if we're taking into account population density of humans, it seems to make sense also to do the reciprocal and take into account population density of the animals.
So we, uh, we've already set a standard for, from what schools and churches, it is 3950 feet.
Right.
Or 3950, whichever it was, so we don't need that public use facility in church listed on this line.
That's a good point.
Yeah. We need, we need it somewhere, something else, somebody else listed.
Specify.
It's best separately. Separately.
Yeah.
Because we already got it set in our ordinance for what we want them to do with them, from schools and.
And you even need it on the, the score sheet for the point system if we already got it listed.
Yeah, we should.
Why?
Well.
Why should you give a point if it's already mandated?
Number one, 3950 is on the document, state, state statute.
Right.
And if you come up and somebody lays 500 feet on a 1000 road, and you don't have it in there.
But we're going to have it on separate lines.
Have it on separate lines.
Oh, yeah, but there won't, there won't be points.
No, no, I mean, they would be, but it would be listed.
It'll be.
I'm saying we don't give.
He's saying they have a point system.
Right, yeah, you, you can't, you can't give a point. We just give them points on residential grounds.
Yeah, on residence, yeah, on residence, according to our, got to sit.
Right.
Right.
Maybe it's already.
The schools and churches propose.
So let's, we're going to contact water company.
Right.
We're going to throw this three-tier system up against the law and sue the states. Another question I have is this neighbor notification, 100 points? For you, what does, I, I don't, without further clarification, I'm having a hard time understanding, telling your neighbor, "This is what I'm going to do," gives me 100 points?
Well, I'll go back to the testimony that we heard in here, neighbors are surprised and see states out there, and they don't know what's going on, you know, they haven't been identified or anybody tell, they're assuming that these, you know, operations going up because of states. We had one situation in there where we had states just put up just to take people off.
Oh, I know.
You know?
But is that, does notifying the neighbor do anything to ameliorate, mitigate, exacerbate?
No, it ain't. It's probably not going to, I look at it this way, and I, I guess when we were in the, you know, part of the corporate producer program, as far as being good neighbors, part of that was try to be open to communication to our neighbors of what was going on in our operations, you know, in the management hall. But another part was whenever we put or expand an operation, of notifying people of what we're doing and why we're doing it. Not saying that they're going to approve of it, it doesn't say they have to approve of it, but they have to be told what is the intentions of it, of what's going on with this piece of talk. And that's on those adjacent landowners, that's not dealing with the next one, two or three roads down, or anything, that's just the adjacent landowner.
And that'll need to be defined.
Yeah.
As who and how.
Well, yeah, how do you notify them? Do you notify them by letter? Do you notify them in turn? You know, if you send, you know, a lot of times in notifications with ID, you know, when you're supposed to notify your neighbors, one, it has to be a certified letter.
Right.
Now, if they don't receive it, you still sent the certified letter, it's been tried to get to them, you made the attempt. Yeah, you can do that with this.
That's why I got a letter, a certified letter last week, about a company coming to spray it. He said he tried to contact several times, and everything didn't contact him, so he sent me certified letters, saying they were going to be there to spray this stuff. I've been called down.
So what do you think, Tom?
Well, here's what I'm thinking. It only takes 325 points to get approval. You can notify your neighbors in a very rude, angry, insolent, inoffensive manner, that I'm building exactly 400 feet from your residence, and I okay it, you know, it, I don't think that accomplishes, we're getting a third of the points just by letting them know. If you want them to know, you can make a mandatory requirement in every case that they notify their neighbor. If that's a goal, but as far as a third of their points being acquired just by sending them a notice regardless of the manner, to, for approval, I mean, the goal of something like this, again, remember, maybe I'm making too much of this, but it seems to me like regulations, we tend, we want to narrowly tailor to achieve our goal, and if the goal is to establish setbacks that now are going to vary based on factors that mitigate or exacerbate the issues that cause neighbors concerned, notifying them is completely unrelated to the amount of harm the neighbors are capable of suffering.
I think that's a good point, you probably should write notification into the ordinance.
It's just, can't, just look, Tom.
What about getting points for, uh, no complaints by the neighbors within so many days of notification?
I see that you get 100 points for notifying the neighbors, but look at, there, if you back up another thousand, be a lot of them say, "I just think you back up another thousand and then tell me about it."
Yeah, right.
As opposed to.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah, I, I, I don't use that.
That's exactly my point, I'm going to step up.
It's, it's, it's disproportionate, you know, because the setback is far more meaningful.
Well, you know, maybe we need to reweight, reweight figures, maybe in neighbor notification, it's only, only 530 points.
Yeah, I would say, or, or a group of neighbors, all your neighbors, sign off, say, "Yeah, that's, I, I don't have a problem with it, they get 100 points for having seven neighbors."
That would be, that would be pertinent. But I, I, my opinion is, you need to weight this, this, the additional setback footage pretty heavily.
I should weight it more than what it is right now.
Yeah.
Say, in 20%, maybe bump that up, because, you know, section density has to do with, that's actually another setback type of language too, even though it does have population density, you're basically scoring more points by being in a less dense populated area.
But I mean, if, if the concern is that 400 feet isn't enough, then this needs to be written in such a way where it encourages.
Well.
Uh, people to, to get further away.
Right, so, maybe we strike down points in the neighbor notification more, add 50 points back up in some of these, these setback points, move the points up, I think that gives each one of those categories more weight whenever you do that. Alright, let's do a little exercise here. I want you on your sheets, in there, in these little subtitles, and you've got, strike out clean record, okay? And, and strike that man out, and put it in there, innovating ideas, we've talked about innovating like mild filters and stuff, and put that as one of your titles up there, for that clean record. And I just want to do this as an exercise. And then go for a lit, the existing land use, section density, separation of the house, IDM, homestead, emergency plan, verification of water, backup water source, neighbor notification, I want you, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, rank it, one through 10, which one you think is most important, will be one, least important is 10.
Are you done here?
It's good. It's on your title. It's on your titles, you go your clean record, your innovating, existing land, section density, separation, IDM, rank them one through ten.
Most important with respect to if I were a neighbor?
Most, most important to you as a planning commission to have equality, you know, the reaching our goals with this. I'm not looking at you as a resident, I'm looking at you as a planning commission member, uh, representing, uh, houses and farms, you know, for equality of what you think is most important.
Can we, can we assume.
Thank God, Mike, you can say more.
Can we assume the verification of water and backup water source are what they.
And also to me, if, if that, that should be everybody's number one, is if we have no water, you know, if that's, if that's an issue, that would be nothing.
All right.
You're gonna have to have both of them. I mean, there, there's a difference, water supply or backup and backup.
It's just right, one through ten.
We'll see, we'll see what comes up here. Ready?
No.
Okay. Jeff, what's your number one?
Verification of water.
Phil, what's your number one?
Uh, separation of water.
Mine was separation. Scott, separation. Danielle?
I'd say, I said water, but I think that didn't answer, certainly need to be a part of the point system, so I would say then number two is separation.
Two, but you put first, okay.
It's on, from this right here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go like taking a test and pretty, I'm gonna take your first thing.
Okay, sorry, I'm the one that wanted to write written one, cause that made.
All right. Yeah, I got separation. Separation.
Separation.
Separation. All right. Hope I got enough of these papers. All right. Number two, your second. Jeff?
Well, I put backup water source, go up at the water.
Okay, that's fine. Phil?
Verification of water.
Right. Mine, number two. Verification of water. Scott?
Verification of water.
Okay, Danielle?
Separation.
Separation. Jim?
I'm not, I'm, I said, I put section in it, then, then it's there.
Okay. Water, verification or backup?
Um, I, I agree with them, but verification.
All right, verification. Tom?
Section density.
Section density. That's number two. Verification of water is number, was the main problem there. Okay, number three.
Section density.
Okay, Phil?
Backup water.
Three on me was backup water. Scott?
Section density.
Section density.
Jim?
Land use.
Land use, okay.
Land use.
Land use. Tom?
Homestead award.
Homestead award. That's close one, three. I think we got two problems right there. All right, number four.
Existing land use.
Okay, Phil?
I put emergency management.
Okay, my number four was homestead. Scott? Danielle?
Existing land use.
Okay, Jim? Verification of water.
Section density.
Section density. Tom?
Clean water.
Clean record. Okay, that was the.
The innovative ideas, I'm sorry, innovative ideas like, well, there's a, my, my, my own calculated buildings, so we're.
Most popular there, and number four, if, if we went, existing land use and homestead award, two and two, split up, one, 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 you know, we really get split up here and there. I think we're kinda seeing an idea, probably see what's important here, where we need to concentrate our emphasis of our points, you know, that's what I'm trying to do. Number five, Jeff?
Separation.
Separation. Phil?
Homestead.
Okay. All right, for me, section density. Scott?
Add, uh, emergency management.
Okay. Danielle? All right, innovating. Jim?
Home.
Homestead.
Violation.
What is it?
Violation.
Violations. Tom?
Violations.
Right, pretty equal there, violations and homestead were there. Okay, I'm gonna go for number six right here. All right. Number six.
Innovative ideas.
Innovative ideas, right.
Section density.
That, uh, six for me is innovative ideas.
Existing land use.
Existing land use? Homestead. Then I got water. Ready?
Homestead.
Tom?
Verification of water.
Okay. Innovative ideas and homestead, split up all different ways on the rest. Number seven. Jeff?
Violation.
Violation.
Violations in the end. Seven for me, existing land use. All right, Scott?
Innovative ideas.
All right. Neighbor notification?
Emergency management plan.
Okay.
Backup water source.
That was equal of violations, uh, innovative ideas, violation, emergency management plan, all same score of two to each, one split up between the others, okay. All right, number eight.
Homestead.
Okay, Phil?
Air testing, land use.
Okay. Eight for me, emergency management point. Scott?
Neighbor notification.
Danielle? All right, emergency manager. Okay.
Innovative ideas.
All right. Tom?
Emergency management.
Emergency management, primary there, then neighbor notification. Okay. Nine?
Emergency manager.
Okay.
Neighbor notification.
Violation for me. Scott?
Uh, backup water source.
Okay. Violation, innovative idea, all right. Right?
Neighbor notification.
Neighbor notification. Tom?
Existing land use.
All right. For your team?
Neighbor notification. Innovative ideas.
Team, neighbor notification for me, Scott, IDM violation, okay. Danielle?
Water source.
Water source. Okay.
Backup water source, I wouldn't claim any authority for that one.
All right.
That's what I had to do.
Tom?
Neighbor notification.
All right. Well, as we went through here and there, I mean, and that exercise, by far, your number one priority is separation from house, okay? So we need to think about weighting that particular column pretty heavy. Okay, number two, in there, they hit in there, it was four, two, one, and one. Four is verification of water. Were you surprised in there? Okay. Three, you got three for section density, you got two for backup water source and two for existing land. Section density was your next, next number on that. Four, you're split all over the board here, it starts getting really spread out. It goes in land use, homestead award, then two and two, then you got one for innovating, section density, emergency plan, and water verification. Five, you got two and two, homestead award and IDM violation, and you got one and one for clean water density separation. On that, number six, you got two for homestead award and two for innovative, it's split up. Seven, two for IDM violation, emergency point. Hey, everything finishes up with two people thinking, you know, I think that we can take that and look at our primary three and weigh them pretty heavy, you know, maybe even to number four, if it starts really split down.
I'd say we can sit down there for.
Four, four comes in about homestead award, cause it came in half the leading votes of the fourth place, half leading votes of fifth place, and half leading votes of sixth place.
Okay.
But you got a good start, guys, and it all worked together, and if you take the first three, start with them, put numbers two, and then go to four, and build on the rest of them, I think we could all work with one or the other.
Yeah, I would like for you to make notes on your papers, that the first three, I'm gonna give you the first four on priority. Number one is separation. Uh, number two was verification of water, four, I would throw backup water, but water is an issue there. And then three is section density, then number four, I'd say that homestead catching in there. All right?
Can I, I'm gonna say something, comment on topic with permission, but I want it, brought up earlier, but, but now that we've done this, it might make my point more meaningful. Some of these issues, like the water source, to me, that is an issue if a big box store comes in, it's an issue if a mining company comes in, it's an issue if a major manufacturer comes in. That water source issue is not directly related to CFOs or RSI. I think water should be the number one concern for everyone, assuming that there is a scarcity or potential for scarcity, regardless of whether it's a livestock operation or a major manufacturer. Therefore, I could put it lower down, and I think we're all going to a pullback out to different assumptions. When it comes to livestock and CFOs and AFOs and CFOs, there are things specific to them which we are regulating in this ordinance. Okay, because if, if, if a mining company comes in, they're gonna be a major user of water, and this, and that'll be a huge concern, and this ordinance is more effective, because this is about CFOs, this is about livestock operation. So while water source and supply is a huge issue, it's not a huge issue just with respect to this, it's a huge issue generally. When it comes to the complaints we've heard about this, and we've heard concerns and fears that may or may not come to pass depending on once we contact our people, sources, the water companies. When it comes to though, the main concerns about livestock operations, whether AFO, CFO, or CFO, those issues will all have to do with setbacks and nuisance, and some of these things are calculated to abate those or exacerbate those, depending on whether they're present or not. So it seems to me like that's one issue, and the ordinance, I think, point system, and the variant of the setbacks should have to do with that, because whether or not someone's got, like I said, three sources of water or eighteen sources of water, will have zero impact on how much of a, a nuisance their animal operation is to their neighbor, the manure smell. While it's important, I don't think that is related to that issue. So if we're looking at coming up with varying distances, we ought to consider a point system. I would like to suggest that we consider a system whereby those things that are gathering points are those things calculated to minimize, or if we take away points that aggravate the types of things that are going to be a nuisance to the neighbor. Other things, like neighbor notification, water supply and availability, are things that we should either impose regulations on or not, regard, irrespective of what the operation has. It seems to me like if you think it's a good idea to note that they should notify their neighbors, what's wrong with saying everybody's required to notify their neighbors if their neighbors have an opportunity, and maybe give them points if they know that the neighbors don't complain? But a notification itself, it seems doesn't impact that. So, um, I think it was a great exercise because we get an idea of all the things important, but also think, and understandably, it was kinda rudimentary, but, but I, but it's a good exercise. At the same time, I, I wanna caution everyone not to put too much into or take too much away from, because when we're talking about water sources and stuff, and implementing that in setbacks and how that impacts setbacks, I don't know, again, that the number of water sources has anything to do with how close a stinky hog farm should be to its neighbor. It's something we ought to consider regulating if it is in fact an issue, but should it mitigate the setback distance? the setback distance.
Well, let me, let me give you a counter, let me do that. It's a huge issue if an operation comes in and they have a detrimental effect on the amount of water that I have in my residence for my operation, by it coming in, by them not addressing to make sure that the water supply and the size of the water line is adequate. It might be adequate for him, his source, while he's up in this line, but he has a direct impact and effect, like odor would have, with me downstream of the water system, because he's actually taking the weight of my water source, water pressure.
I think.
Clear, I know, Danielle, give it a shot.
I think what he's saying is, we're gonna have a checklist, verification of water, check, 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 and once you've checked everything, then you go to the point system, and we say.
Where setbacks vary.
Where setbacks vary. We're gonna have a checklist, if you have verification of.
Just keep it out of that.
Yeah, I mean, the things that affect odor and distance are one thing, yes, it does affect you, but it's, I'm gonna affect you downstream from me, whether I'm eight hundred feet from you, or eighteen thousand feet from you. You know what I'm saying? If we're on the same line, I'm gonna have the same effect on you that's unrelated to how far away I am from you. So if we're establishing varying setbacks, and maybe that, I probably was not well received, because it's too much so.
Well, it might, it'd be like something else in there, it's important enough that it's in a step, like.
Yeah, because it's got, it doesn't impact odor. It's something that we need to verify.
You have a verification check page, not deal with points, that you have these sources of water.
Yes, I think the things that affect distance should be narrowly tailored to impact the things that distance matters, like odor.
So this is a neighbor protection point system.
So you're saying the points should be related in odor.
In setbacks.
Nuisance issues.
Nuisance issues, and these other things, we should have verified regardless, and not give them points for it. That's the way I rank them, I, all right.
Because water is in more.
I agree with that.
It's the same argument as water.
It affects the whole community, rather than.
Pass fail.
House.
Pass fail would be a water.
Yeah, that'd be.
Pass fail.
Well, definitely.
That's exactly what I'm trying to say, I apologize that I spoke so long and couldn't.
Well, you're a lawyer, you're used to that.
But I, the issues on setbacks should have, and the variance of setbacks should have to do with those things that affect the reason we're setting back. Water's gonna affect the people three, three houses over, and they may be well outside the maximum setback, but that should still be an issue affecting them that we need to worry about. And water is also gonna affect us and the community at large, whether it's CFO or a mining operation. So we don't, I don't think we're gonna be writing it in here just as to CFOs, I think water should be an issue. If, if it is an issue, it needs to be in there regardless of what it is, and regardless of what the setback is.
We probably could, I mean, going forward, we may burden the water companies with having to supply some sort of documentation that adequate infrastructure exists for this proposed facility, or something along those lines.
Pass fail.
It might pay us to have East Washington, uh, the three outside water systems, the opposing, the outside water system, the suppression of water for the county now, to come tell us what their situations are before we write it, write anything in.
For this pass fail thing, or anything like that. All right, okay, we've had a big exercise here, in there, and I think that we've kind of got, got gems and ideas and stuff, and I think that we need to take them in thought processes as part of what we do. For one, I think we need some homework, you know, we need to work with the water companies and see where they're at. I think this three-tier type of system, if it's a feasible legal mechanism that we can do with AFO, CFO, and KFO in there, I think we need to do that, find out. Innovative ideas, I think we need to find out if there's a separation and categories of violations for me, even though we scored that down low, we still need to kind of look into that, right?
The thing that, that has occasionally come up, that you probably do want to think about, is something Tom said earlier, is the animal density in an area, because you may want to think about this, in, if, if we regulate this in such a way where everybody is encouraged to do an AFO because it's less restricted, will they start building AFOs separated by something over the minimum setback distance? But, you know, you may want to have something in there to address that, to prevent it.
Well, possibility, because I know in a lot of operations, and that's reason, some of the operations have gone away from the twelve-building systems, you know, to smaller, and then the industries are actually regulating themselves to be a little bit of a distance away from each other. I mean, the, the ones that are probably the exception, I would say were probably the closest, is down toward eastern, is the Green Farm, and the Powers Farm, they're pretty close together. I doubt seriously Tyson would build those two farms that close together, but one's, you know, a fairly new operation, and one's a, an older operation. So I think it's harder than, than the industry will cleanse itself in the separation. Now, you might have, again, and the same way with turkeys too, because there's some cross stuff between turkeys and chickens, that they don't want to be that close to chickens, or turkeys don't be, be that close to, same thing. So, you know, that's good, I want to break this homework up, who had real good connection with water sources, with the water utilities? Phil. Would you maintain this on as remarks, to see how important this water usage is coming in, and what they're, you know, doing on that?
Since East Washington poses in, and what's, what's Brown Vernon?
Brown Vernon.
It's Brown Vernon?
Well, Brown, 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 Campbell, yes. And I can.
One more, a two.
Yeah. There's, uh.
Salem, Eastern, but there's Salem, Hovsey.
Salem poses, East, East Washington poses in.
Stucker Ford, Paul, Brown, the.
Uh, Stucker Creek, Stuckers, the other one down south, with, south, northeast corner of county.
And I can run.
One more, what was Stuckers?
I can run the AFO, CFO, and KFO across Farm Bureau, and then four. I'll run that past the Stuckers. Uh, anybody real chummy with I D M?
Yeah.
Down there.
Okay, once you see that they're the same categories of violations. Is there anything else?
Maybe you have ideas, or, or, like, the homework that I've been doing.
I could, well, I mean, I, I think our consultant might still be willing to provide us, what was once a.
We carried on, right, some questions.
I, I think the advocate also could.
Can I bring some, bless the watch, to come up with ideas for that.
The innovative ideas, that the farmer can.
I think those are.
Likes, a lot of them are.
Wayne, what, you've done to change the subject, you sent us a memo, and you might be changing residential county.
Yeah, I, uh, I am going to do it.
Okay.
Probably within the next thirty days. So I'm gonna have to resign from the commission, I hate to leave you all hanging here in the middle of it all. But, you know, it's been an honor working with you all, but I, it's, it's getting to be more than I can do to commute to work like I am.
But if you're not gonna be finishing out your term, you could probably take, prepare to do all of these things.
Uh, Wayne, and refresh my memory, Wayne, in your position, what is your position of the, where were you appointed?
I was appointed by the council.
By the council, county council, so you're a county council appointee. Okay.
So that's, that's the one, I'm speaking about pardon.
Yeah, by pardon. Scott, you were commissioner, right?
That's correct. Cause. So they, no, I think they're all commissioners appointments, some, I think, I'm through a commissioner appointment, but I think it's all based on some, or by virtue of a position, that's official. And, uh, you.
Terrance.
Phil. Oh, and county council, sorry. That's pretty. Yeah, okay. So he's the representative for the county council, okay.
Cause we.
And then there are at-large, five at-large appointments by the commissioners.
Yeah. All right, so we need to take that and back to.
I'd like you to raise that, because I sent an email to the commissioners, saying, be thinking about, really, it's the council.
All right, all right, we already had a meeting, so we won't be addressing that until next, and Paul's gonna be on Paul's side. We'll have, we're gonna have budget hearings, but that's not what we're gonna do this.
That's what, that's the thing, Mr. Budget, right, we need to, we had brought up at the meeting when we could, then have a board, so Travis has already sent, sent in, so we need to prove, all right, as a, as a committee, to.
All right, you wanna make the motion with that?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Jim, let's make the motion, second. Bill Marshall, second, so discussion.
We need to do that proposal.
All by you.
I think we need more money.
I can tell you're a county council, you're not gonna, yeah.
What's the motion, and who's second?
I, I'm, Marshall, approve the budget, request that's presented to, Travis presented, and who, who's second?
Bill's like.
Bill's second.
I don't, it is gonna be hard, we have to pick it up, we're gonna get this passed, because we must.
All right, and I know this is probably a lofty goal in there, but I'd like to, the next two months, we even put this thing together. I think section seven oh one was our big section, and we had the title in there, and I think a big part of it is right here, so, you know, be really ready at the next meeting to really put this thing together, okay? All right, uh, first, second, discussion, third, discussion, take it to vote, to go ahead, ratify the proposed budget to the county council. All in favor, signify, I'll say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say, motion carried. I don't want to prolong this meeting any longer than what we have to.
Did you ever get someone on the innovative ideas, to, I'm trying to take a minute.
All right, we don't have anybody as of yet, anybody want to tackle the innovative? I mean, I think Karen Steele probably be a good resource to that.
She and I have contacted.
All right, just talk to her about that. I think that's pretty much kind of the best with that. All right. With that, you know, what other, other business I had, is that at the, at the county council meeting, Dara Morton came back and asked for a letter of support from the plant commission.
Who did?
Dara Morton.
Yeah.
Had asked for a letter of support for, uh, a three nineteen grant on the South Port Blue River watershed. Currently, we have a grant, a three nineteen grant for the North South Port Blue River watershed, an implementation. This South grant just will extend that watershed up a little bit further, it'll be the same type of criteria that the Blue River watershed has done the past two years, it's basically making a data line of all the, that port, so that we can submit in for board grants for, uh, implementation of that watershed. So, uh, she's asked for, this, this soil water conservation district would ask letter for support for the watershed project, with the type of support you are willing to provide, included in your response. This support can be in form of funds, in-kind, support, technical assistance, representing to our steering committee, providing access to water bodies, useful equipment or space, and service or guidance they could provide. Our comprehensive plan deals with a lot of these issues, and so a lot of our guidance documents and our, our technicalities, as part of what we can present in the plant commission, would suffice as in-kind money, apart as monetary type of funds, I don't see that we have that, that we can do the letter of support and give them in-kind support in relation to what we're doing. I'd like to have a motion to approve, so I can, like this letter.
I'll make the motion.
Like, try, but I have made the motion, we have second. Second, Danielle Walker, and it's open for discussion. Seeing now, take it to vote, all in favor, signify, I'll say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say, the motion carried, all right, we'll take care of that. Is there any other business needs to be brought before this plant commission at this particular time? Max, Rhonda, anything else? Travis? Anything in particular?
I would like to take a motion to adjourn.
So do.
Jeff, something to make a motion. Wayne, you second that? All right, all in favor, signify, I'll say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?